Rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, on a ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie, roll call.
Councilmember Groves, here. Councilmember Chambers, here.
Councilmember Salzweigl, here.
Councilmember Jankovic, here.
And Mayor Bor, here.
For the consent agenda, we have these proposals in front of us, so we need to add the Riverwalk bathroom proposal under new business item D. Any other changes for the agenda? Motion to approve consent agenda with that change.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Groves, yes. Mayor Bor, yes. Councilmember Salzweigl, yes. Councilmember Jankovic, yes. Councilmember Chambers, yes.
Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
Perry Beecham, who resides at 924 Riverside Drive, a couple things. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Brought in front of the council, an issue with the warnings that are going on in the community, and you've been keeping me in the email loop that I know that Dan has sent out, and again, there's many questions, several questions, because there's four or five different things where property lines and easements and everything, those, and Dan came up with another one, which was four and a half feet from the curb along Riverside Drive, and I did measure that, and that's basically a four-foot sidewalk and a six-inch curb, and that's right where it is, so I want to thank you, I know that they are working to resolve this, emails have been going back and forth with point broadband, so thank you for that. I would encourage other citizens that feel that possibly with this confusion, that maybe things have been put on your property, and I just say that because if you don't question it, and maybe you're all right with that, but again, it eventually becomes a prescriptive easement, and then when you want to go sell your land, different things, that could cause a problem, so I would encourage citizens to get ahold of Dan or Mike Burns if they feel that that is an issue. And I see that a lawyer is from here for Jessica. So my question is, if it does show up that it is on private land, and I know my next-door neighbors and everything, my question, it would be to the council is, without, so, does the bird then be on, if I wanted to use that service and it's not moved, I then, do I have to get an easement from my neighbor because that cookie cutter is on their land? So again, just quite a thought, because I know you're talking about some of those things coming up. And then lastly, I want to thank Mr. Hurst, knew nothing about it, but I guess there had been some complaints in the past with the parade lining up on Riverside Drive, and I know that he, you know, came to our house, and I'm going, oh, what did I do now, but it was just to inform the citizens up and down Riverside Drive that that was going on, and again, I want to thank him. It has never been a problem in the Beecham family, and never, the parade route is fine with me, but it was nice that you took it upon yourself to contact all the citizens up and down Riverside Drive. Thank you.
I was doing Liz a favor.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that. I swear to tell truth, the whole truth, the fuck truth. Who's the big cheese in this place?
Mike Burns.
So who's your highness?
Marty Chambers.
So gentlemen, ladies, I have this great idea, I'm thinking you're all gonna love.
You gotta name and address.
Oh, you need a name?
Yep.
I'm sorry, sir, sorry, your highness. I am Eddie Johnson, 13429 Forest River Court.
It's Mike Chambers.
So here's my plan. We have a showboat ride, white elephant in the room, here's what we're gonna do. So, you know how we have 58 pot stores in this town? This is a great idea, we need to embrace the pot, embrace, embrace the pot like Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor's got hashbacks.
Let the research show that the gentleman, whatever his name may be, is exaggerating slightly. Thank you.
How many, how many pot shops?
Four.
Oh, 54, so, 54 pot shops. So, we take along the river like we had the fest over the river?
Yep.
Okay, here we're gonna do, this is a great idea, I'm loving this idea, Yadbor, John Bormer, come on.
Hundred percent.
All right, bad boy, so here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna go along the river, we're gonna call it Smoke on the Water, we're gonna have a hash bash put on the river, you sell your paraphernalia for your pot smokers, you get all the 54 pot stores to line up, it's gonna be a gold mine there, I'm telling ya, and honestly, got a gold mine, and here's the kicker, we gotta pay for a bathroom and a boat, do we not? You're gonna love this.
We're gonna make for a boat, no tax money is going to the boat.
Well, I got a great idea, just, here's what we're gonna do, then, I got another idea, another idea, so here's what we're gonna do, you know those smokestacks on the boat? Okay, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna turn them into giant bombs.
No, we're done.
Oh, yeah, just think about it, hurry, get up there and do your little toky toky on the boat.
Do we have a sergeant at arms present?
All right, chief.
You have a second idea?
Oh, so, no, this idea's gonna go great, and we're gonna raise so much money, we're gonna get another arm, yes, there, so, it's gonna go great, we're gonna raise a lot of money, and then we're gonna take that money, and we're gonna put around about right here, and we're gonna have a horse.
Take him out of here.
We're gonna have a horse, and on that horse is gonna be the one under, God love, Paul Walker on a horse.
Thank you, Eddie.
You didn't like them?
I thought they were fantastic ideas, unfortunately, this, the showboat is completely empty. Sorry.
All right. Thank you, Bear.
Thank you. I don't know how you didn't stop to that. Anybody else? Thanks, Eddie. More old business, what are a right-of-way permit review, Dan? Good luck top of that.
I'm gonna try. I try to look into your pants, I think. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I was asked to review our right-of-way permit procedure. Anytime someone's working within the street right-of-way of the city hall, they're supposed to have a permit issued by the city that includes anything underground and above-ground in the right-of-way, such as underground electric, telecommunications, water, gas, sewer, above-ground sidewalks, curbs, tree planting, et cetera, in the right-of-way. Prior to 2020, the city utilized two different right-of-way permits, one for underground and one for the surface. Permits are almost identical, basically went to a different person at Public Works, take a look at the work, there's only difference. These permits were minimal requirements and minimal direction given by the city to the applicant, I believe you have them in front of you. These permits were, would be inspected as needed by the public works staff, the work involved with them. Large underground work with outside contractors started picking up in 2020. We noticed we were always having to discuss with these contractors our requirements of their work, or because our form was pretty vague. To alleviate confusion and to provide clear expectation to those who wish to work in our right-of-way, a new permit was written and being used starting in 2021. Included with the new permit are additional conditions, and we also developed specifications and plans and little information for those that are submitting. Also, I have taken over all the reviews and approvals of the permits. Again, right-of-way permits are submitted by anyone who needs to work in the right-of-way, they're submitted in person or electronically to City Hall, who then passes them along to myself, and there's a $50 fee for the permits that's collected at City Hall, the bond is the same as it's been since at least 2016. The information supplied by the applicant is reviewed and additional information requested if needed. If the work is a one-location utility repair or surface repair, the information is quickly reviewed and approvals given, that being something like the sidewalk repair, or water service repairs, things of that nature. As the work is completed, someone from Public Works will stop by and make inspections and approvals as needed, and then the surface work, concrete forms are inspected before the concrete's poured to make sure that everything's put in at the proper thickness and width, and then looked at afterwards to make sure it was all done properly. For the local contractors, they know our procedure pretty well, they know our Public Works personnel pretty well, and they'll call the guys directly if they have questions, concerns, or get them to come out and take a look at things, and these smaller local contractor improper permits go fairly well, and there's very few, if any, problems or issues associated with them. For the larger projects, such as those by Consumers Energy or any telecommunications companies in our area, more time is usually necessary to review all their information, their work locations are reviewed and compared to our existing GIS information, if there appears to be any conflicts by looking at the GIS, or if there could be conflict with upcoming work the city might be having done in the near future, then we start pulling out some old construction plans to review what information we may have on hand. Any documents we find that pertain to the area of work, we will share with the contractor so they know what we know about what might be out there so we can work around it. Once all known information is reviewed and compared to the proposed work in the right-of-way, the permit is finalized, if everything checks out sufficiently, permit is approved and returned to applicants so they can start their work. If we need additional information, depending on the scope and extent, sometimes the permit will be partially approved, and then we request additional info for certain areas, or if there's just too much conflicts, we will deny the permit and ask for more information. We always let the applicant know by phone and email, and also in writing. When a permit is approved, the applicant or the contractors request to contact the city at least three days in advance of their work, so we know when they'll be starting. For larger projects, we request a pre-construction meeting over the work with those involved, such as the contractor, and many times we'll meet them on-site, point out our utilities and discuss our concerns and make sure we understand theirs. One time-consuming part of these larger projects is responding to the missed request contractors are required to make before starting a work. Anytime contractor might pass by our existing underground utilities, they need to be marked, and this information, this request goes to our utility department, and they go out and they mark shut-offs, water mains, sanitary sewer mains, and storage sewers. Unfortunately, our records for this information can be difficult to decipher and utilize as we try to do our best to locate existing utilities. One thing that the utility department has started doing is when they're on a job assignment on a work order, say for a meter install or something to that nature, they'll spend additional time taking pictures of the outside of properties to locate curb shut-offs, and information inside the building, work might come into the house, into the building for water and sewer, we're starting to put that on our computer system based by property address, so that if we have to go out and look something up, maybe we have additional information out, and it's kind of handy, like today I had to do a permit and a right-of-way permit, and we actually had some pictures of work that was taken, that took place back in August, that we could share with the contractor, let them know exactly where the ground we know things are, so that hopefully they'll avoid them. So far this calendar year, we've received 900, this is as of Thursday, we've received 960 missed request to have utilities marked. 960 requests are not 960-point requests, it's not 960 addresses. We get a lot of requests lately that are whole-city blocks, we want the entire block done on both sides of the road, everything, everything that we have, and that is very time-consuming to find, to mark, and to go out and perform the work. What we try to do is ask the person making the request to define that work area better for us, give us more information. We had a meeting with Miss Dig, and that was their suggestion, was ask for that information. Unfortunately, we don't get many responses back when we ask, and the next thing you know, they call that Miss Dig in again, and they start saying the city's not responding. We're responding, they're just not answering, and it's starting to be a big headache, because again, you have a whole block to do, when you have all these other smaller ones around, we have three people doing all those, and again, our information is kind of limited, so it takes some time to pull it all together, but they're doing their best and keeping up as best they can, and when it comes to these bigger projects, the guys do meet with the contractor, find out where they're actually gonna be, and stay ahead of them, so that... Last thing else we want to do is get things marked out six blocks ahead of them, it's gonna take them three weeks to get there, and a property owner wants to cut their grass, and they pull the flies out, cut the grass, cut the paint off the grass, and we're back to square one again, so, those are all those things that we're dealing with, yes.
Can I ask a question at this point? If, if the permit is 50 bucks for Panfield to do one line to my house, it's the same 50 bucks for point broadband to do the entire city?
Yes. For each permit that they submit, they submitted their permits in blocks, and blocks have come, I think there's six of them.
Oh, so it's not one permit for everything they've done all year?
No, I think there's six. But still, six permits for the entire town, still a lot, a lot less than...
Yeah. The only reason I'm asking is I know that it takes a lot more of your department's time, and I'm not suggesting they have to pay 50 bucks for every home, but, I mean, is that normal? Is that the going rate, or are we...
I don't know if it's a going rate, every community does their own thing. It just seems to me, Dan, we're underselling your employees' times at 50 dollars, I mean, if it's taken them all day, it's a losing thing, and I think that's something we probably should look at.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of internet services, I know they're supposed to be cheaper than what I'm paying Comcast, but they're still gonna be making a whole lot more than 50 bucks a month from everybody they hook up.
Yep.
And if we gotta spend how many hours, I'm just saying, it might be something to consider.
Why shouldn't it be 50 dollars per home? If they pay a permit for one home, we're sending DPW people out there to do that work, right? So now they're doing that work for every...
Well, I guarantee you, if I hooked up to my house, they're gonna charge me 50 dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Whoever comes from that box to my house is gonna charge me 50 dollars.
Does the Metro Act even allow?
I was gonna, I was gonna say, it was probably set at that, or maybe even, I'm not sure, last year telecom, because the Metro Act, basically, if you're familiar with the Metro Act, that's basically a permit that's, it's kind of state form, so there's not much the city can negotiate with. It's either a bilateral or unilateral permit, and this is just for telecommunications, not for cable and other things, but basically, if they submit 500 bucks, the insurance, and the route map, that's really all you can charge a telecom to, that's just to be in the right-of-way. Now, we're talking about construction on the right-of-way, so we're making that distinction here. One is the use and occupancy of the right-of-way itself, which is the Metro Act, and then the other thing is the amount of services and time and expense it takes to coordinate, just what Dan was talking about, which is meeting with people, pre-conferencing, which is all good, and keeping the lines of communication with these companies, which is all awesome, and usually, the way it works out is, it's more of a collaborative type thing, if it can get them to come to our standards and work with us, so, but in any event, that's probably why the rate's set lower, is because the Metro Act kind of sets that bar, and there's some language in there about, you know, shall not charge more than the 500 dollars. And we're, we're doing that, but we're distinguishing between construction and actual occupancy, so, but that's my, that's my guess. Now, that's only as to telecom, so it's different if it would be cable or something else like that, it's about the utility.
So they dictate how much can we charge them? There's no flexibility in that?
There's no flexibility, it's a state form. Now, they're supposed to pay so many, so much per foot of telecom line that's run in the city, that goes to the state and eventually is supposed to come back, goes back to the locals, and then we're supposed to set that aside and do a separate fund and use it for right-of-way type, type things, but, yeah, that's the, you know, what was happening was back when the Metro Act was passed, it was just whatever the locals wanted to charge, and so it was very wide, you know, there would be communities that were charging really high, and there were some that were charging fair, and so this was sort of the legislative fix to that, I mean, they're all uniform, you're charging the same amount, you're requiring the same information, all the permits look the same, and it does have some good pro-municipal language in it about if someone's not doing what they're supposed to, or, you know, it indemnifies the city, there's...
But financially, make sure the state gets all the money first.
It's, it does come back to the, it does come back to the locals.
So they have to, point broadband, they're paying a fee to the state?
Mm-hmm, per foot.
Per foot?
Of Metro Act line, and this is just for telecom again, but yes, they're by statute they have to, per foot, and then it goes...
Well, telecom, cable, TV...
The lines are boring now, aren't they?
Well, who has a telecom line anymore? I know Marty does, but not...
Too, because they were small.
Well, point broadband would be an example, and they define...
That's telecom.
Yes, they define what a telecommunications company is and what a cable company is, it's defined, so you can tell what each one is, depends on what services they're providing, but...
So you're saying, down the line, we might actually see more money to the city for all this?
But with caveats on how we can use it, right, for right-of-way?
I think, yes, it's earmarked usually for right-of-way projects, however much is, I don't know how much you get each year for that, but...
We get stuff from cable, but it's not, I don't know, it's not...
It's not significant.
It's not all huge enough.
Yeah.
It's a fine bank for...
Pretty much.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just...
It's a good, it's a good conversation, because it's good to have the expert be able to tell you that, because I have a hard time really explaining it, because I don't understand it, I'll be honest, and again, I see different communities charge different amounts, with base of bits about a 50 dollar fee, and I know some places they'll waive it for some of them, because it's just, to go and try to come up with a fee to charge that's fair, that you could sit down and say, this is how much we have to charge you, versus the next person, and then having them swabble about not being fair and have to explain it, there's a lot of headaches involved with that as well, that, just, where do you want to have your headache, I guess?
Thanks.
It's a really good question.
It did sound like a lot of it was weird, they were actually performing the work, there was some problems with them going on private property and performing work, and, I mean, so this process talks about the right-of-way, so that's, that's what Dan's looking at, is it in the right-of-way, yes, then it goes through our process. If they're going on to private property without, without an easement, you know, they can come tell us, but, you know, it would also be trespass for a company putting infrastructure on a private property without having easement to do so, you know, that, that would be, you know, between the landowner and whoever's trespassing there, but, of course, we're working with them too, so we want to make sure it's in the right place too, so, you know, we want to hear that if it's...
Right, and we make it clear, we only give a permit for work in the right-of-way, anything outside the right-of-way, we do not get permission for, we do not approve. They want to go on private property, that's really none of the private concerns. I do know, I did find out, we are a few easements here in town that I don't know, that I don't have record of, that have utilities down them, that ended up with a couple calls on it, and people have to look at their titles on their properties, because I don't have information, I can't stop them, and I don't give them permission as well, we try to make that clear, and if we do find something like, one that recently came up, here's the information we have, the last I can say is that the right-of-way is here, you show me that it's something different, great, otherwise you get the same what we know, and that's, that's the route we take with...
So what recourse do we have if they go through, directly through somebody's backyard, right?
If they go through someone's backyard without an easement on their yard, but it's not, but not in the right-of-way?
Yeah, they went right through my trees, they used my trees, though. And they've done it in Valley Vista housing, we had some complaints from over there, the up and down Riverside Drive here that Perry brought, the driveway that they tore up on Hudson, what's our recourse to stop them or hold them accountable? Because you can call point broadband, that's what you're telling people to do, and they're saying, oh, we contracted with an outside company, it's not our problem, and you contact the outside company, this utility, whatever they're called, and they say, oh, we're hired by point broadband, so call them, so ultimately, people are gonna end up here, as well they should, but they never should have been able, they should have been able to get ahold of this.
And there's not a huge amount that you can do when someone goes on a private property and does that, but you can direct them to the Michigan Public Service Commission too, that's another avenue, they take complaints, so if you're seeing a pattern of trespass going on, and the thing is, if it's on private property, we don't, we don't know it's a trespass, we don't have their title, and we don't know, they may be operating, they might have some 1930 something, you know, easement to go through that, that spot with some, with utilities, and maybe it's very broad language, we don't know, so, but if that happens, you can, you know, I guess, contact them, and I know that sometimes that sends you in a circle of, oh, it's the contractor, and it gets back to us, and we could, you know, at least bring it to their attention, and then there's a Michigan Public Service Commission complaint process as well for that.
Yeah, it took three weeks, and they ended up, they wouldn't even take my call anymore, and that's with the voicemail, 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 voicemail. After three weeks, I headed up, and I left a voicemail on my own, basically, when I got home at 5:30, bolt cutters are going out, and your stuff's coming off my property, well, behold, I get home, guess what? She's gone.
But it should have never got to...
No. And Dan came up, Dan seen it, took pictures of it, and Dan contacted them, and...
Yeah.
So... Well, just to, just to give you an idea of how that goes, no, we get complaints, we get issues, there's problems that come up, we try to address it with the contractor at the time, and have the contractor address it with the resident, and come up with a solution for everybody. If that can't, if something isn't done, and, you know, we do ask for a bond from these contractors, but typically, trying to pull a bond, a bonding company to pay for something is difficult work, to be honest, I've never been successful at it. You know, what I find is you call a bonding company, you say, we need to pull this bond to the city so we can pay for this work, they say, just a minute, they put you on hold, and then your phone's ringing from the contractor, because they just called the contractor, and the contractor, or whoever's bonded is, they'll call you, and another issue I find is you call the applicant, say it's point broadband, they say, well, yeah, it should have been put in properly, because our contractor told us it was, and they're going with what their contractor's saying, versus what, I mean, like Comcast, they're not even, they're in Levonia, crying out loud, they don't even know where the problem level is half of them, but they rely on their contractor, what I find is, there are, when they come back for their next permit, you deny them, you say, you're not getting another permit until this first one's done, and that usually gets them to jump, I've worked that well with AT&amp;T, I've worked that well with Spectrum in other locations, so, they, but the problem with ends up with that, though, is, is usually, these contractors, applicants are coming in, Comcast wants to put their, their service to another facility here in town, and so they come to get the permit, it gets denied, they tell that first, that property owner that the city's holding them up. My hope is that that person calls me, so we can talk about it, so they can understand why we're holding it up, because I would think that most property owners in our community, when they hear we're trying to keep our community looking nice and making these contractors do it right, would be appreciative of it, they may not like that they're getting a delay, but hopefully they'll be appreciative that we're trying to do the right thing here in town. So again, I find, I've found, taking that route with them in the past, with those two that I mentioned, has worked very well. I haven't had to deal with Comcast or point broadband on that, but all our permits have a start and ending date, and if they're past their ending date, and if it still have work that needs to be done, they shouldn't get another permit until that one's, those are done. done.
Do we require them to submit instead of bonding, liability insurance too?
They're supposed to have a copy of the liability insurance sent in, that's all in, should be in the file here at City Hall for all these places.
I guess my confusion is if you're Point Broadband, and you're putting in fiber so that you can have this fantastic product, but by the time it gets put in, you allow this contractor, outside contractor, to make it look like your company is just putting in the most minimal amount of work, and they don't care about the residents and their yards and the community. I don't, if you were running the business, why would you allow, why would you allow another company to make you look like that without holding them accountable? Why did it even get to us, I guess, is why I'm confused. If I'm selling a product, and somebody's out there selling it for me, I want them doing a good job, I want them representing me well.
Well, maybe that's where the Michigan Service Commission comes in. If Perry and/or your neighbors and other people, you know, it might help put a little heat on Point Broadband, because they like to pass everybody around, okay, pass this around. Now you can talk to somebody from the state. I don't know. I wrote it down.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Like I said, when issues like, when they come up, we try to discuss them with the contractor on site, if that doesn't produce results, contact the applicant and the contractor. Unfortunately, I've also found where the contractor that's on the application, this contractor in the field doing the work, they've subbed it out, and that sub might have subbed it out, and you get these, and everybody that owns a structural boring rig is an expert at doing it, and 90% of them don't know the rules and the laws provided. And again, that's, and hands up, that was one of the reasons we rewrote this, is that we had a contractor in town directional boring on Friday, and we had everything marked out for him, and they still hit the water service, $10,000 later for the repair, sent to the applicant, we got it fixed, and said, we're not going to have this happen again. So, if you look at the application, I think item number two, or three, or eight on there says, Public Act 174 says, you have to locate by hand every utility that's marked that you're crossing. So, they can't say they didn't know. And that, you know, we're looking for that, and if they're not going to follow the rules, they're not going to work in our town. I don't know how to make it any clearer than that, to make it so that we get a good product put in in our community that isn't being messed up. Just like you said, do you think these applicants would know that? But when they're sitting in an office, not even in this town, and haven't even seen the street in this town, kind of hard for that person to have any feeling towards the community, in my opinion. So, those are the things that we do. We also, we're going to review our process, and we're going to look at that application and get some more information on it, and one thing we're kicking around is requiring anybody that's going to be doing work on a city block or more, to send out a notice to the people affected, name of the company doing the work, name of the applicant, and contact information to give these folks in town and other, another number to contact when they have a complaint. And then, maybe, we get the, we get the big circle out of there, where they call the city, we call them, they call them back, maybe we can at least bypass one of the steps for our citizens here. So, we're looking at doing that. And I got a pretty good feeling of the response I'm going to get from the applicants, but I guess, like I said, we pick the fights that want to fight, so. And again, we're limited with the amount of space available in our right-of-way. We have 66-foot right-of-ways, which are typical, we have a lot of 49-and-a-half-foot right-of-ways. We have a lot of space. And when we have utilities already in the groundwater and sewer lines that are our responsibility, we want to make sure we can maintain our utilities, things get a little tight, and we also have power poles, sidewalks, and trees. One of the, one of the questions I heard about was the five-foot space. Something to think about, all these telecommunications, gas lines, a lot of the other utilities are only three feet deep at the most. Our lines are six feet deep or more, and we don't want a water main to freeze. Well, when we dig down to a water main that's six feet deep, you know, you have a couple of feet on either side, so you can stand there and work, the banks have a certain minimum slope they have to be, for safety of that person down there in the trench. So, if they're down six feet, and you're doing a two-on-one slope, you've got three-foot of cutback on the top minimum, two feet down, you're already five to six feet wide at the top. Well, if we let other entities put their facilities in that area that we're going to maybe be working in, the safety factor goes to the roof, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
That's what the five-foot and three-foot?
Yes, and the 18-inch one, that came right from the state, that's a requirement of Eagle. However, found out last week, Eagle will waive that under certain conditions. Things you learn. So, anyway, those are the, those are the things behind our right-of-way permits, the reasons behind them, why we do what we do, what we're trying to do. If you look at the last page of my memo, I went back, we have records at Public Works itself, that go back to 2016, and you can see the number of permits we have, and you can see they are going up tremendously over the last two years. They just take out the gas permits, and we can see some good jumps in the rest of them, so. It's nice, it's nice that residents kind of get a permit, we can keep an eye on it and what they're doing for their little sewer repairs and water lines. And again, we're keeping more records of that at Public Works now for the future, so that when the next property owner comes along, and they're like, well, we got something going on here, maybe we have information. Because we do not have information on sanitary sewers from property buildings up to the main. We have main information on the main, which is our responsibility, but service lines are the property owner's responsibility. And unfortunately, most property owners don't know where the sewer goes. And we don't know where the sewer goes on most of them. We have a little information from when lines were, main lines were videotaped, there might have been a lagro that we've seen a picture of. We have old records from the 70s that might show a lagro. So, if we have that information, we'll share it, but we don't know where it goes, how it goes, how it clears, or anything like that. So, it makes it a little difficult to-
That's not the SCADA thing, is it?
No.
No.
Don'ts.
Like, sorry for another, your question, but when you do Monroe next year, and you're going to be exposing all that stuff, are you going to be making notes of?
Oh, yes. Things we do, two things you do nowadays, a lot different than what they were done even five years ago, 10 years ago, 50 years ago. A lot different.
Dan, when these guys are all done, when they're getting their fiber and things wrong, will they be providing the city with an exact layout of where they want all the-
They're supposed to, they're required to as part of the permit, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of work, so I'm very appreciative of.
I did bring for those that care, these are all the permits this year, if there's anything you want to look at, want to see the information that we give, how we do it, it's all right there. I keep a paper copy of it all, because I'm old school, and I like to be able to put it and take a look at, take it with me out in the field and show people.
Yeah.
If you want to look, I have them all.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
Jim, Showboat Six report.
Yeah, I was asked to give a little bit of presentation on things that are happening over at the Showboat, and it's nice to see a couple of board members here tonight, Mr. Mike Baum, Teresa Munt, who are both on the board, so it's nice to have them here tonight. We'll look at the financial report. Here to date, the total income is just a little over $13,000, and that income after expenses, assigns, paying the people coming clean, the people that worked the event, and that income is about $11,467.47. I think since I had sent this to you, there's probably been an update to that, and so, but it's pretty close, where I don't think we've had a whole lot more events come in since then, on that part of it. We probably have had, I think, seven events rent so far since we started, from, I think we had a small-class reunion, to weddings, to Christmas parties, to a few things like that part of it. So, we're working on that, as I also would send you some updated calendar events. One thing I can say, I know I mentioned in my proposal about the website, you can now go to our website and book it online, it is now up and functioning, it's been tested. So, for anybody that's interested, you just simply go to that site and log on to that part of it. So, here's a little bit of our upcoming things, there's, in May, we got a wedding anniversary party, we have a Forest Hills class reunion, maybe next year for anybody that always didn't like Forest Hills, maybe Lo should get up there and support that as well, so, on that part of it. There's another thing that I sent you, right now, there are some things that the board members are looking at, and the board members voluntarily took some of these things and looked into those. You can see on the list that everybody took a little bit of everything, concerns, issues, things that we need to find answers for on the showboat. Mike has been a great help on that as well, he attends these meetings on that part of it. So, that's it from that part of it. Things the board has done since June, I can't remember exactly when we first had our first meeting, sometime like that, when we, April, May, something like that, Mike?
Well, maybe the beginning of the year.
Yeah, so in other words, to look at becoming a 501(c)(3), we had to come up with bylaws, we had to come up with articles of incorporation, conflict of interest policy, nonprofit rental policy, policies, procedure manuals, lease agreement rental policy. So, a lot of things the board has already done to get to that part of the 501(c)(3), and I believe they met yesterday, was that when you met?
We meet tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow they'll be looking at finding out, how do we move forward with that 501(c)(3)? I know Mike has tried, due diligence to fill out that form, it's very complicated. Apparently, we got another resource we're going to look at doing that, and the board has taken that on to relieve Mike of that, and hopefully we can get that resolved and move on with that. And once we get that done, then we can have a discussion as the council on, where does that showboat end up? How does it show, end up into the 501(c)(3) group? But until that part of it, we can't move forward with that. So, Mike's working diligently on that for us. So, that's kind of a nutshell of what we got. There are other fundings still available from past fundraisers that the people did, there's three different accounts. Funds still keep coming in from brick sales, et cetera, that is in a, in a form over at the chamber. Mike still has some money held over in the city count for that part of it, and then the, there's another account set up for the 501(c)(3). I think it's close to maybe $200,000 in all those three accounts jointly for that part of it, something right around there. So, that money will be spent on items that need to be done yet. We need to do some insurance cleanup from the insurance thing, that probably will come out of those funding on that part of it. So, trust me, once we get a better handle on that, and we'll be able to give you a little bit more detail on what those expenses come out to be, so. Mike, you have anything you want to add on that? Teresa?
No, I'm aside.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question for you.
Sure.
I noticed, as a landlord, you guys aren't collecting a deposit. The deposit's there in case of incidentals, carpet gets spilled on, has to be cleaned, somebody breaks a door, breaks a window, it's all covered under that. I'm curious to why no deposit is being collected for these events in case of incidentals.
I think we have their credit card on, on, held on for those things, that we can charge those incidentals after the contract. Yes, it is, yes.
But you're, okay.
Yes. I don't have that copy ready for me, Marty, but I'll be wanting to get you that in the lease agreement policy.
Yeah, because, I mean, as a person that rents properties, it's smaller, it's, it'd be a troublesome matter if you do not-
Well, the thing about that is, is we need to know immediately, because like anybody else could always stop the credit card charge the next day from charging on your card. So, we should know that before the end of the event, whether or not there was any particular damage, because there is a supervisor for these events that are representing our group, so we should know before we leave that there has been some potential damage or charges back.
Yeah, but I'm just looking at if you did collect the deposit upfront, it's not such a big issue if it gets missed.
Piggybacking on that, I would think, the way I'm thinking it's going to go is the Showboat's going to be really popular during the warm time of the year, and I would think you'd want to get a deposit to secure the date, because even a small non-refundable, because if you rent it to Mike for June 27, and I call you and say, God, I'd like to do June 27, and then Mike, you tell me no, Mike backs out, you got nothing, and I've already moved on.
I believe there is a, we just talked about it at our last meeting, about a non-refundable thing like that part of it. Even if you book out a year out, you're still going to ask for money upfront.
Are you holding? I know, so when we book hotels for our hockey trips, we booked 10 rooms. So, they put a charge on the card, and then once they check out the room, then they release it, right? So, you're saying, you know, we're just taking the credit card, I could give you a credit card that's good today, and then cancel it before the event, and then-
Absolutely.
I trash it, and then you have no recourse. You know, if you're holding the money, and saying, okay, it's clean, here's your money back, or release it.
Well, you do have to, the credit card does have to go through before the event is booked 100%. You have to pay. There's a 30-day fee that needs to be paid prior to 30 days. Anything else paid prior to that, I believe 30 days would probably be, I think, maybe a non-returnable if you don't. So, there are some things that are set up for that.
Well, we have our turn in here, and I don't know if this is in your wheel, also not, holding a credit card versus collecting a deposit?
It's all a matter of collection at that point, because they'd be on the hook because of the contract, if they did those things. Then it's just all a matter of what's the ease of collecting on that, and so, it's kind of a policy decision whether you collect money upfront and have, and hold it, or if you keep their card in file and prepare to act on it if it's, if something goes wrong. So, it's just a matter of collectability at that point. They should always be on the hook as far as the contract goes, but.
It's a liability, I think a lot of businesses even hold to, and, I mean, it's a chance we, we may have to take, hopefully, you know, we did our due diligence and checking the backgrounds and making sure that things are most moving well in advance. Some of these things are a year out. I mean, a wedding, or stuff like that, or a class reunion, so.
Any big marketing questions coming up because of what kind of-
Matter of fact, Mike has been working, doing due diligence on what that budget dollars are like, and one of the things we definitely need to do is marketing. We are looking at a professional service cleaning company to come in once a month. We know that the people that are cleaning and now are going to, and do a fairly good job, but it's not the deep cleaning. So, we're really working on things that keep coming on up at these meetings to work on, and hopefully by February, we have a really good handle on what that, that budget's going to look like from a standpoint.
If you're just looking at the upcoming rentals, and you see three rentals total in the busiest four months of the summer, that's a little concerning when you're talking about-
Oh, it definitely is.
Liability.
If it is, so we definitely have a lot of work cut out to, to get more rentals in that part of it, so we'll see how it goes. So, any other questions? I guess that's it for me.
Cool, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Item D, Riverwalk Bathroom, security proposal.
Yes, we got a proposal from Jim's company, Allied Universal.